Okay. Okay, today is September 12th, 2013. We're at the district's office and we're, we call the meeting of the Hyde Park Central School District Board of Education to order. At this time, I need a motion to go into exec session to discuss confidential matters pertaining to the employment, future employment of a particular person or persons and matters pertaining to collective bargaining negotiations.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? We're now on executive session. You in favor? Okay, at this time, I'd like to have a motion to come out of executive session, please.
So moved?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All right, we are now out of executive session.
Mr. President, I think we need to vote on that.
Oh, vote, yeah, sorry. All those in favor? Okay, all opposed, we're now out of it. Okay, so we'll now have the allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me just get my... Okay, I believe we have no agenda modifications for this evening, so I would like a motion to adopt the September 12th, 2013 agenda.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried. And now we're at the pride. As soon as I...
Okay, before we go into the official pride, that's listed on the agenda, I just want to talk a little bit about opening day. We had a fantastic opening day where we welcomed all of the staff and they joined us at FDR for opening ceremonies and the FDR jazz ensemble performed for us and it really just set the tone for the day. The next day, all of our 3,800-plus students arrived and they managed to come in, have a full day of school, go home, and very successful and smooth opening of school barring recent weather issues. Additionally, we have a very generous community and I just wanted to highlight some of the generosity of the community that goes into providing school supplies for our students. St. Timothy's provides school supplies for FDR students that need supplies and it's a generous donation. We have a private individual who donates a tremendous amount to Violet Avenue Elementary School in backpacks and school supplies and it is a generous donation and this is done on an annual basis. And also, you know, many, many other community members contribute to fund drives for back-to-school supplies for students. With a 42% free and reduced lunch, I can tell you those supplies are much needed for many of our students. I would like to show one new donation this year and that was from the Claudio Cares Foundation. Recently, after the death of Claudio Coppola, one of our students, his parents and community members formed a foundation and they have continued to fundraise and really keep his legacy of his pay-it-forward and generosity. So most recently, they donated 20 of these backpacks that are, they actually have an iPad hookup here? I, yeah, okay. And they are loaded with all kinds of school supplies and water bottles, which is also a new school supply from when many of us went to school. In addition to the backpacks that were donated from the foundation, they dropped off probably, I would say about eight very large boxes of school supplies and those supplies were divided up between the elementary schools and the middle school where supplies were appropriate for the middle school. So on behalf of the Hyde Park Central School District, we would really like to offer our thanks to those who contributed to school supplies for our students that we know of and also the many, many people who participated in back-to-school fund drives. So thank you very much. At this time, I would like to turn it over to Cora and Kim to recognize some very special students in our community and I'll just turn it over and let you explain why.
Thank you. Last summer, so a year ago, summer 2012, we brought Camp Invention to Hyde Park and camp is a one-week summer experience for children entering grades one through five and the focus is on what we keep hearing as STEM, which is science, technology, engineering, and math. And it affords students the opportunity to come and be in a camp environment at one of our elementary schools for a full week, five full days of program. And the program includes just a number of hands-on activities, very rich and engaging, and in our first year was staffed fully by Hyde Park teachers. And in 2013, this past August, we were able to double the number of students that attended the program from 50 to 100 and we added, in terms of staffing, college interns and these were college students who came to us primarily from Marist College and high school interns, high school volunteers who earn community service credit. So tonight, Kim Niesel is here to talk a little bit about the role of the volunteer and I'll just tell you that it's an incredibly wonderfully appreciated role, I'll let her give you the detail, and then we have certificates for the students that participated. Not everyone is here tonight, but we want to just take the opportunity to name all of them and celebrate and express our appreciation for their support. So, Kim?
Thank you, Cora. Really amazing, actually, to have both college interns from Marist and high school interns from Roosevelt High School to spend a week of their summer, full days, all day, every day, with elementary students. It was really, really an amazing feat. It's a very busy day and I think you would see some nodding over here, it was exhausting, but they had so much fun, probably just as much fun as the kids. We did a GeoQuest program this year. We were basically studying the Earth, the extremes of the Earth, from heat to cold to ice to water, and also just the Earth itself, from space to underwater to land. One of the students that's here tonight from FDR had my favorite unit, which was duck chugging. The students were asked to bring in an appliance that was broken from home. We had the cords cut, so it was all very safe and safety goggles and we gave the kids screwdrivers and some different tools to take apart these items. So it was a really important thing that we had, you know, extra people on hand to supervise. And this student that's here tonight was able to help these kids take apart their items and rebuild a duck chugging device. They took little rubber ducks and were able to shoot them back to their countries of origin. So it was one of my favorite modules and I think he had a lot of fun. So I want to invite Evan Catani up from FDR High School and thank you so much for coming for your, a week in the summer. So, thank you, Evan. We had four other high school kids again participate who couldn't be here tonight. That's right. If you don't mind, just so I don't forget anybody, we had Elizabeth Ryan, we had Anya Tomaszewski, Gabby Deo, and Christiana Pishash. So thank you to all who helped for this week of Camp Invention.
If I could just say one, one thing about, because I did see the ducky chugging. I really think you ought to add an A in there and called steam because some of those were very artistic. Very, very artistic.
Okay, so next on our agenda is district leadership team overview and this will be familiar to many people and we keep going through some iterations and really just wanted to be in full compliance with the regulations 100.11 to have shared decision-making. And 100.11 is a regulation that's been in New York State law since at least 2001, at least, maybe even longer. And the plan requires that, that shared decision-making, including all stakeholders in the district, look at these items and develop a plan. Educational issues, the manner and extent of participation of all parties, the means by which student achievement will be evaluated, the process for dispute resolution, which is an interesting one, but in case all parties can't agree, we have a, we do indeed have a dispute resolution portion of the plan and we need to coordinate with all state and federal laws regarding parent participation as well as adhere to our own parent involvement policy. We have been in compliance, it has taken several iterations and we keep attempting to just get it right and be more inclusive and increase, more importantly, really seriously increase parent engagement. So we bring this back to the table because we are going to reconfigure our biennial review under this regulation will be due this year, we fill it out every two years. So we're going to reconstruct a little and satisfy our plan and again, with the end goal being to increase parent and community engagement. The goal is to improve the educational performance of all students regardless of their socioeconomic backgrounds, race, sex, language background, or disability. That's not just a goal of that plan, I can absolutely say it's a goal of every educator in the district and it's a goal of every single member of this Board of Education. The district has to be developed in collaboration with committees. One of the interesting things about the regulation is the committee has to be representative of the bargaining units as well. So letters went out this week to the PTA presidents seeking membership from a PTA where they would actually sit on the committee as a representative of the PTA. We also opened it up to our other bargaining units, so the letters went out to the presidents of all four of our bargaining units asking that we have a representative from their bargaining unit to sit on the committee. And the interesting piece about the parent participation is it has to be a parent who's not employed by the district. You can enter into some collective negotiations between the Board of Education and the local collective bargaining organizations to get representatives. In the past, the district has done something like that, but I'm not sure that we're going to need to get into collective bargaining in order to get members of the committee. The other unique thing is our status as a focus district based on our performance. And as the requirements for a focus district, we need to provide concrete mechanisms and systems for parent and engagement, parent, family, and community engagement. And we were required to conduct a survey, so many of you will remember and the Board of Ed will remember, and if you visit our website, you will see that last year, we did indeed conduct the survey. The requirement is that we use a diagnostic tool for school and district evaluation, another acronym, a DTSDE, that we have to fulfill that requirement. And the other part of the requirement is that the survey had to be on the list of the approved vendors for New York State and we selected K-12 Insight. I will take a moment to say Jesse Lieb from K-12 Insight is with us tonight. Give a wave, Jesse. He's here as support, support of what it is we're endeavoring to do. And I'd also like to say that our experience with K-12 Insight thus far has been very positive as well as the experience my state organization has had with this organization and several other districts that I know who have also selected K-12 Insight. And a little bit more about that later. The other thing is that under the new teacher evaluation system, it also requires that a survey is utilized as part of the evaluation. So we're marrying the district leadership team, the requirements under our focus status to engage in a really full-fledged endeavor to increase parent and family and community engagement. We want to continue with K-12 Insight and we will also continue, all of our buildings have a building leadership team, they have to follow the same construct of having parent representatives, union representatives, and they can open it up, but the administration can select the committee and as long as they make sure they go to the bargaining units to seek membership from all of the different organizations, then we move forward. We're also going to continue the academic strategic planning process. Last year, we tried to marry the district leadership requirements with the academic strategic planning process and we had met with minimal success mainly because of the commitment to be part of that academic strategic planning committee and the laser-like focus on instruction and the fact that it occurs during the day prevented some parents from being involved. And as part of the regulations, it is incumbent upon us to make every effort to meet the needs of the parents and many parents work, so we needed to find a vehicle where we could engage parents that are not available during the day and that's why we're looking at this again. In the past, the district had, has had this construct and we moved away from that because we had a hard time getting parents to attend the evening meetings, but we'll go back at it again. We do feel that the community is ready and that we have some people that will be available and we hope that the PTA and the bargaining unit will ensure that we have the committee membership that's needed. And as I mentioned earlier, we will submit our biennial review, which we do every two years by law. The district leadership team meetings are published in our calendar. They will take place from six, beginning at 6 o'clock. We have one in October, one in November, one in January, one in March, and one in May. K-12 Insight, and this has changed a little bit, our portion after our Bozey's aid was 2,4300. We are using Title Federal Funds for 8,400 of those dollars. And a change on this slide is that when Cora and I reviewed the funding that we receive as a result of being a focus school district and the requirement that some of that funding go to parent engagement and we satisfied what we were going to do with the money, the remainder of that will not come out of central office, the remainder will come from the money that the state gives us to fulfill this review. So the entire process will be federally funded and will not come out of any of the general funds. So before, it's already posted online, we will change that slide. That was a new development when we got the money with the regs in between when I did this and put it up there. So that was very, very good news because the central office contractual code can go to other uses to improve teaching and learning in the district. Part of what K-12 does, and before I go into, I'll do this one first, part of this is building stakeholder trust and engaging all voices and holding forums. Also, if you look at the surveys that were conducted last year, there's an awful lot of follow-up that needs to occur on both the positive results that we received and on some of the results from the survey that cause us some concern. These surveys are extensive, they were triage surveys, students took the surveys, parents took the surveys, teachers took the surveys. The survey document itself is this thick, there's a tremendous amount we can do with those results and the last thing you want to do is survey, have it sit on a shelf and nothing happens. And that's where K-12 Insights come in. They come in and they manage this whole process. They facilitate the community engagement with always the number one target of how are we getting together as a community to improve student achievement? The other thing that will take place is we'll be in full compliance with our board policy on parental involvement. Part of what we'll do is we're going to measure the perceptual health of the district, how healthy do people perceive us to be? And we will be intentional, inclusive, and transparent in the plan for building and sustaining these relationships. So I'm just going to refer back to what our survey indicated as a starting point. On the parent end, one of the questions was, "I support the school's mission." As a parent, I support the school's mission. The average of all six, the average response of all six of our schools, 87% of our parents said they strongly disagree or disagree that they support the school's mission. It's alarming. "School leaders keep me informed about the school's goals." 66% said they strongly disagree or disagree. So there's a disconnect because we have 700 employees who come to work every day and want to educate our students and yet, our message is not getting out or we're not connecting or we're not being clear in our message and we need someone to really organize the process of bridging this gap because to have 700 employees come to work every day, and many of them are our parents, many of our parents are also employees. So to have 700 people come to work and have a disconnect with the community is, is something that we need to resolve and something we embrace. We would love to be able to get to the point where our parents say, "I support the mission and I understand what the goals are." So to that end, this is why we're here today and thankfully, in order to fund this, we do have federal funds that we are required to utilize for parent engagement purposes and we very much look forward to the partnership with K-12 to help us in this process. Any questions?
Any questions? What was the sample size? How many, how many surveys, people took the survey exactly?
It varied from building to building, I can get that, it's all online. All of the survey responses that went into those two questions were considered statistically relevant, but I, you and I both know that that can be a small, in one building, that could mean 30 parents filled out the survey and in another building, that could mean 70 to 80 percent, 70 to 80 parents filled out the survey. I can get you the specifics. Again, you know, part of what we're also going to look at is how many people did respond to those surveys? Are they representative of everyone or is it that, you know, those are all the unknown questions that we would like to answer. Who filled out the surveys? How many people?
That was my point.
Yes.
Thanks.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. There was one building where I think it was about 93% said that I, that I disagree, that I support the school's mission and it was only 30 people, 30 parents who filled out the survey, so.
What do they think our mission is?
Well, they might not know what the mission is. Again, that's what K-12 comes in and says, "If you're answering no, you don't support the mission, what do you think the mission is and where are you getting your information?" So, you know, as I, I remember, recall someone saying, "If there are 30 people, if there are 30 parents in one building that say they don't support the mission, I want to know what they think the mission is."
Yeah, me too.
And I want to get the message out very clearly what our message is. So part of the problem may be just that. We may not be utilizing our communication vehicles effectively enough so that people know what the mission is. So part of the goal for this year would be to say, "What are we going to do to make sure everybody knows what our mission is and what our goals are and let's resurvey after we put all the effort into getting that out?" Yeah, so we look forward to this, we embrace this. If you go and you look at the surveys, you will come up with, if somebody spent a day with the surveys, you'd probably come up with 200 questions easily and that is what K-12 Insight will help us to navigate. Okay?
Okay. Are there any other question? Can we move on? You want to stay up there or are you going to?
Yeah, thank you, Jesse. Yeah.
I've got North Park Elementary issues.
Oh, North Park, I need to come back to my seat for that.
Okay.
I'm just going to pull up the website. Thank you.
Okay, so North Park and a couple of things. Most recently, we dismissed early, we had an early dismissal at North Park based on a very, very unusual condition. We had a significant amount of water and moisture on the floor. In the entire time that this building has existed, this has never happened. Later in the day, we also discovered we had a similar, but not anywhere near the extent of a problem at Netherwood. And I went to travel to Netherwood. Well, first I traveled to North Park and when you get the phone call that said, "We need to send the kids home, the floor is slippery," I thought, "Okay, that's a new one." And when I went and looked at the conditions, it was indeed serious enough that it was determined through the building principal, myself, and our facilities director, Elliot, that we did indeed need to send the students home because we could not produce a safe enough environment for the students to walk through the building and the adults. When I went over to Netherwood later in the day, there was also a significant amount of water, students slipping, falling, an adult fell, but again, the, the water level was not anywhere near as serious. At the end of the day, I learned that FD Roosevelt High School had a similar issue and had cones up and some really unusual water on the floor of the school building. So I thought, "Well, this sounds a little bit bigger than Hyde Park." So I shot out an email to every one of my colleagues in Duchess County asking if they had any problem with slippery floors as a result of moisture. Every superintendent that responded to me responded positively that they had the same issue with slippery floors. We canceled after-school activities, which was open house at North Park and at Netherwood. And Arlington closed after-school activities in every one of their buildings. But as I said, I heard from Redhook, Rhinebeck, Wapengers, Arlington, and Millbrook. And what happened was a phenomenon, phenomena of the weather with extreme conditions and of cooling and extraordinary high humidity and literally just causing water to collect on all of our floors. So, for the Netherwood Elementary School, the cooling down at night was enough to dry up the floors. But at North Park, we brought in four or five, five dehumidifiers. First, we brought in fans and mops, and then we brought in dehumidifiers, and we ran them overnight. We rented those dehumidifiers. We have purchased dehumidifiers for North Park, and I'll get to that in a minute because we knew we had a moisture problem there that was not this floor problem. Netherwood had it much worse than the other schools because of their proximity to the water table. So, we managed to, with the help of the facilities department and working round the clock, we managed to dry North Park enough so that we could open school this morning and bring the children back in. So, with that, one of the things that we had happen at North Park over the summer was at a certain point, the building principal called Elliot, our facilities director, and she notified me as well that we have mold in the building. And so, as soon as it was identified that we had mold in the building, we contacted our Duchess Bowses Health and Safety Risk, I'll look up the name of that in a minute. And we had the mold tested. And the test came back that it was non, it was the non-hazardous type of mold. Again, we had extraordinary conditions over the summer with a lot of humidity, rain, high, high, high heat, and a building that's locked up and shut, not air-conditioned. So, so we had mold. The mold was tested. It was cleaned up. We were able to open school. We continued to experience high humidity. So, mold resurfaces the minute you have moist conditions and high humidity. And we started, actually, over the summer, once the mold issue surfaced, we started immediately to look at what are some long-term and immediate ways to address the issue. So, we had started to work on the North Park moisture issue, which is why the dehumidifiers were ordered long before this recent water issue. We knew we needed to address the issue of humidity at North Park. So, we changed some ventilation systems. We've been testing the air quality and the mold and ordering humidifiers. And simultaneously, we had asked our architects and engineers to look at long-term solutions. We were fortunate to get a hydrogeologist in to look at our whole, the whole construct of North Park, how it's built, how, how high above the water table. So, we've been putting all hands on deck all the time. But you could imagine if we closed a school over the summer to handle the mold issue, and then we had to send children home early because of a water problem and some mold resurfacing, people are worried and concerned, and so are we. And so, we are moving full steam ahead, no pun intended. No, we are moving 110% ahead on addressing the issues immediately and long-term. I will say that we also conducted an air quality test today. And I'll ask Elliot to talk about that in a minute. And we have also retested the mold. We have no reason to believe that the mold that has started to resurface because it's hot and wet again is any different than what we tested a few weeks ago. But we will retest and continue to monitor the situation. We also acknowledge that some people are very sensitive to mold, whether it's harmful or not. So, I'll just read the letter that went home to North Park Elementary's and families today, and then I'll let Elliot speak about our process for testing. So, this went home today. And also, Lisa sent a letter as well. We, we put it on both sides because there was, you know, a particular message from Lisa, the building principal, about rescheduling open house and some of the logistics of the school day. And, and then certainly, people want to know from a district standpoint. So, "Dear North Park Elementary families and staff, I'm writing to inform you of the steps the Hyde Park Central School District is taking to address the mold and moisture issue at North Park Elementary. Please know that the health and safety of our students and staff is our highest priority. Please also know that we are actively pursuing and implementing solutions to immediately mitigate the current conditions and simultaneously implementing, developing plans for long-term and permanent changes in building climate conditions. The moisture issue yesterday was a county-wide problem as a result of extraordinary weather fluctuations. We do indeed realize that the pre-existing mold growth will be fueled by continued levels of high humidity in the building. To alleviate conditions immediately, we have dehumidifiers running round the clock in the building. We will mobilize a cleaning crew over the weekend to cleanse all floors, walls, surfaces. We have adjusted heating, ventilation, and exhaust fan runtimes. We have installed data loggers to track moisture, temperature, and relative humidity levels. And we are conducting air quality and spore testing today, which we did. The results of all testing will be shared with our North Park community. The mold observed and tested over the summer was non-hazardous, and a complete cleansing of the building occurred prior to the opening of schools. We utilize the services of Duchess Bowses Safety and Risk Management Department to collect samples, which are then sent to EML Lab P&amp;K, which is an independent lab for testing. All results are public documents on file in the district offices. We wish to acknowledge the high level of concern you have for the health of the students and the staff and to let you know we regard this as the highest priority in the district. All necessary assessments of the conditions will be conducted by professionals employed in the appropriate health and safety agencies. Communication regarding testing results and initiatives for remedy will be shared with you on an ongoing basis. Additionally, information will be shared publicly at Board of Education meetings, and all pertinent, pertinent documents will be posted on our website. If you have any questions or concerns, please do not hesitate to call me. With that, I would like Elliot to spend a minute talking about the testing that was conducted today.
Good evening. As Dr. Rajic referenced earlier, we did do set testing this mor, or this afternoon, approximately 12:30 this afternoon. We did two forms of testing. We did air quality tests, which are samples of the air taken throughout the building. We also did a physical spore sample of what would be apparent or something that would resemble suspected mold condition, where we took multiple samples from different areas of the building as well. The spore samples or suspected spore samples were sent out this afternoon for same-day testing tomorrow. Depending on what time the lab gets it, that same day could be Monday. Again, depending on the U.S. Mail Service, but it was sent express mail overnight today. So, by Monday, we expect to have those lab samples received, much like we did back in July when we tested the samples when this situation first arose. The air samples, however, were taken with instantaneous results and downloaded by Mr. Weatherwax of the Duchess County Bowses Health and Safety Department. That result came in this afternoon and explicitly did not indicate any airborne mold spores, which basically means although there may be mold growth in the building, the airborne spores are what get people sick. The air samples that we took today indicated no such spores active in the air at North Park in any of the areas that we tested. So, that is good news. If there is any growth from the samples that were taken, the physical samples that were taken, they would be cleaned up this weekend as part of our intensive cleaning process. Is there any questions or any further info?
Thank you, Elliot.
Thanks, Elliot.
Okay. This is a real quick one.
We now have a presentation on the district leadership team.
Oh, no, we didn't.
Oh, you, oh, that's, well. Common Core, then. Really.
This up, this is just very brief. As many of you know from reading the newspapers, two major things happened in New York State. A new teacher and principal evaluation system, as well as the implementation of the Common Core learning standards. And I just wanted to indicate to the community and to the Board of Education that we will be having informational sessions. We had a couple last year. We will continue to have informational sessions on the Common Core learning standards so that if any parent, you know, really, again, you know, talk about the communication plan, this is new. And so, this would be a question that many parents may feel they don't know. They keep reading, and every newspaper you pick up lately says something about the Common Core learning standards. And I just wanted to point out where you can go. And if you go to NYSED.org, you will find a whole host of information and parent resources and FAQs, frequently asked questions. And they have a very brief video on how the growth scores are calculated for the teacher evaluation system. It takes two minutes to view this video. I was going to show it, but. I don't want to click on it, but it's a, it's a, it's a very brief video. I'll send out the link. And it shows you how the, the data is collected and how your child's growth score is compiled. And they are compared with students that they are similar to. And so, that even though they have a different teacher the following year, their growth is compared, them compared to their peers that have the same background. So, English-language learners won't be compared with native English speakers. Students with disabilities will be compared to other students with disabilities. So, we will have some information nights coming up on the Common Core and student growth scores. In the meantime, we just wanted to point your attention to, there is a tremendous amount of information for parents on NYSED.gov. What? And then, yeah, you click on Engage. It's, you go to the State Ed website, NYSED.gov, and clip on, click on the Engage New York, and there'll be parent links, and we will have parent information sessions. So, but because we know that the student scores will be sent out this week, and there'll be many questions, every building, every administrator, all the teachers will be prepared to help you navigate. We'll be holding some community meetings to help people understand. But in the meantime, if you're an independent thinker and want to get some information firsthand, there is a whole host of information for you on that website.
Okay. On this topic, I'd just like to point out, I did go and look at it. And it's based on three years of data. But it's three years of data on different, different types of data. So, it's not really valid for this year. I think the State Ed has already agreed that it's not valid, and they've already backed off on some of the scoring and cut scores and how teachers are being evaluated as to where that is. But if you look at it and you look at our scores, certainly be concerned, but don't be so concerned because the, the results are the result of mismatched data, in my opinion.
Okay.
So, now, Wayne, you ready for a technology infrastructure update?
Just wanted to start off this presentation with recognizing Mr. Ador, Forrest Ador, who's our technology director, who has excellent foresight. And several years ago, came to us and started talking about this stuff. So, as, as we're listening to this, recognizing that Forrest had the foresight to start building this plan quite a long time ago in my office and with the cabinet, explaining the reasons why we need this and why it's important. So, I'm here to support him and talk about, a little bit about money, but this is really the, what, what he's done and then put together. So, without further ado.
Thank you, Wayne. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I'm here to discuss a little bit about technology infrastructure upgrades. I know, an exciting topic. But, and hopefully, hopefully, we can do some connections, make some connections and help our, help our parent data because I do have the mission statement right here. "The Hyde Park Central School District empowers our community to strive for excellence and embrace the opportunities of our globally connected world." You know, I bring that up because that's at our core, globally connected. It works with, you know, everything that our students do, everything that our teachers do, and, you know, building, building our community to be a global community. That being said, tonight, I'm here to, to talk to you guys about a proposition, proposal to upgrade some of our core network things. And some of the rationale behind that, besides our mission statement, in the next year, in 14, 15, we will have something called Park Testing or New York State Computer-Based Testing, which will require our network to be in a more robust state than it is today. So, that's one of the, one of the leading forces, I think, but behind some of what we're looking at today and where we're going with it, at least it's helping guide where we go with it. As many of, many of you know, wireless is a popular thing. It's guiding flexibility in our instruction. We don't have a whole lot of that right now. We have sort of a homegrown network that we've kind of established over the years, and I think some teachers will attest to having to walk to certain places in buildings to find that. And the current trend, actually, across the, you know, across our country anyway, is moving away from desktops and moving to mobile devices. Very, very popular. And then, of course, another consideration as we move forward is district safety, keeping the kids safe. We've had some unfortunate events in, in other school districts that we can learn from and we can do better ourselves. So, one of the things that we have to address is bandwidth, our connection to the Internet and our connections within the buildings. What I'm going to show you in the next slides kind of addresses some of that. And then, you know, every day or every year, you know, it's, it's more and more challenging for my department to keep up with the technology requests from staff, from students, even starting from parents, you know, as we, as we move forward. I know even from just the board meeting and all the discussions we have about how technology has changed. You know, we have laptops in front of us now, so. And then, as we've referenced with Common Core and Engage New York and other things having to do with our teacher and administrator evaluation tools, there's a lot of connections to technology use, technology devices, and use of data. So, that being said, I'm going to start. So that being said, I'm gonna start with the wired infrastructure upgrades that we're proposing. These are to replace a lot of our end-of-life equipment. We have a company called Cisco, who, well, we, we purchased networking, networking equipment, and a lot of that is coming up on end-of-life and due for recycle, anyway. We currently have a network backbone that's around one gigabit per second. We are looking to upgrade that to 10 gigabits per second, to upgrade the speed within the buildings, and eventually between the buildings and out to the internet. You know, modernize the core equipment. That basically means just that our, our equipment is able to handle the data that passes through it from more devices and a variety of devices. And this is here to build that groundwork for wireless. And I put the bottom note, you know, some, in, in some discussions, we've talked about if, we, we currently get our internet service through Dutchess Boses. This change or this infrastructure modification would allow us to consider alternate internet providers if we need to get additional bandwidth or other support. So, with this, there's, the details up here on the screen will show you the proposition of the number of switches that we're looking to, to purchase and implement across the school district. This does not include some existing switches that we will be reusing or modifying to continue use. Anything that's modern that, that we've had, we're not, we're not changing, we're not getting rid of, we're going to just enhance what we have. Then we move into the wireless upgrades. So, the wiring, the core switches are done, now we can think about wireless. And this is really preparing us for that park testing. It will provide wireless access in every classroom and every instructional space. So hypothetically, well, not hypothetically, in the next year, what the state is telling us is that we will be moving from traditional testing to online computer-based testing. And what that means is that the school district will have to adapt to being able to test kids on computers in a limited amount of time for the regions, for the three through eight tests. And we're still not sure of all the ramifications, but we have some basic requirements and basic specifications to go by. As we, as we improve wireless service for all of our district devices, we're also looking at managing devices, a better way to manage when guests enter the network, when students bring in their developments, their devices, and making sure that the security is there to support that. And I, I put a couple, a couple key, key words in my, in my side of the industry, BYOD and one-to-one. So, bring your own device and one-to-one, one, one device per child. These are, these are strong, these are, these are all across the country, they're, they're hot, hot words for, for different things that school districts are doing. So it's something that we would be in a, in a great place to start to leverage or look at. What this entails from the wireless perspective is approximately 350 access points across the entire district. We looked at the density versus the distance models. Many school districts are putting wireless access points in hallways and just to get basic coverage everywheres. We are looking at more the density model, that we have adequate service in every, in every instructional space where we would wanna utilize wireless devices. So, this, the 350 speaks to that, that it's quite a number higher, but it is a smart network that would actually be, these access points would be able to sense each other and kind of adjust. And what's great about that, too, is it, it actually does help us with, some of our buildings are in older construction, a lot of concrete walls and such, and at least three of our historical buildings, that make wireless quite a challenge, otherwise. And, you know, finally, or well, along these lines, with some of the management pieces behind the scenes, there's some redundancy built in, and there's some network, network management tools to help us monitor this large system that we're putting in place. Next, along that, along the, the health and safety route, we're looking at doing, improving our safety by adding classroom telephones. Currently, we, we did a, an implementation a few years ago at our elementary schools where we implemented a, a new Cisco voice-over IP system, unified the, the four buildings and transportation. Now we're looking to unify and bring District Office, Havlin Middle School, and FDR High School into the mix, along with bringing classroom phones in as well. It, we'll use our existing data network for all in-house calls, so really important. Right now, some of our calls actually do go out over our local telephone service to be routed back into the schools, but our elementary schools, when folks are calling one another, that's all of our internal network currently. This system already integrates at the elementary school with the PA systems. We are hoping to enhance that integration. And finally, when somebody dials 911, it is important that we know where that 911 call originates from, to notify. We currently actually do have that at our elementary and our transportation, that if somebody does initiate a 911 call, those messages come out to us. It would, this system would include voicemail for all staff, and some basic numbers around the, the number of phones, about 315 new classroom phones and 135 office phones. And there's a tie-in, that there's some other health and safety things that we will be probably bringing to you in the future that will tie this system in with, with some other proposals. So, with that being said, I'll pass that back to Wayne for a moment for funding.
Thanks, Forrest. I have to say, I've learned a lot through this project about networking and what goes into putting in the, the structure and infrastructure into buildings. But I think what's most important that we talk about is the investment that we make in our students and preparing them for future generations and getting prepared for the world out there. So, this project, it was really important that we look into this, not just for the testing, but certainly for the ability to prepare our students for the future. So, at that, there is an investment that we have to make, but a worthwhile investment. We have the foresight that Forrest had of, you know, looking into this, and then certainly the, the cost that comes along with it, but I think it's worthwhile. We partially funded from our current budget this year, in 13, 14, $600,000, just about $600,000. And then, as we got into the intricacies of building this system, we recognized that it would be a lot more, including the phone system that Forrest mentioned. We had a very fortunate year with regards to revenues and expenses, and had some extra fund balance that we'll be discussing in October. So part of tonight's presentation includes a, you know, a, a little bit of beginning discussion about utilizing and/or committing part of our excess funds for the 12, 13 year to this project. We do, we have $600,000, we need a little bit more, and we do have that, those funds available. So, the difference that's offset by the fund balance commitment recommendation would be 1.1 million, and that's outlined on the next slide. The good thing about the company that we've been working with is that they're on New York State contract as well. And typically, anything on state contract is, you know, we know that they, it's been bid out and it represents really good value. I think Forrest said something today about another district that he did similar networking in and what the cost of that was, and then I looked at the difference of what we're, you know, outlining this entire district with. I was pretty impressed. So, we're definitely worked with this company and gave them a good negotiation, lots of negotiations back and forth. But anyway, the funding proposal for the overall tech budget and fund balance commitment includes Forrest's full operating budget. It was important that we don't forget that business has to happen, and, you know, we made sure that throughout this whole process, that the, the normal things that happen, that happen in the tech department will continue to happen, whether it's a smart board or printers and all the different things that have, happen in the tech department. And then, the second part, excuse me, is what are we gonna run on this system? And that are the, that's the purchase of devices. And so we've also put a portion of dollars, we haven't decided what that will look like yet, whether they're iPads or Chromebooks or whatever that winds up being. We, we're gonna need these devices to run what Forrest talked about with the park tests. So, it's got two sides to it. And again, the goal of this future purchase covers an entire grade level. So we put in enough budget to cover an entire grade level and get us through, move it up to the next year, and so on and so forth. So with that, I'll hand that back to Forrest.
Thanks, Wayne. And I think he already covered this, so I don't have to reiterate that too much, but we, we haven't identified the particulars of the equipment yet, but I think we've hoped that we'll, we'll bring that back, possibilities. We're working in the tech subcommittee to review those now. So, any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, one. The phone system you're talking about is gonna go wireless also? Or we're gonna have to string wires all over the place?
No, it's, it, it's a voice-over IP, so it's a network-based phone system. So it actually uses our existing network cables that we've installed in all classrooms. So, in essence, when we go into a classroom, we could plug the phone in next to a computer and then plug the, strangely enough, as it seems, you plug the computer into the phone. And the, and the phone gets its internet connection through, or the computer gets the internet connection through the phone.
All right.
Now, this, this is a significant upgrade to the system, but once it's in place and proved out, I would think the technical requirements would drop significantly. Is the company we're contracting with gonna be responsible for the actual installation and testing of the upgrade, rather than putting the burden on our own tech people?
Yes, yes. There's a, there, if, if we move forward with this, they'd be contractually installing, they've got a cabling vendor that would be doing the installation of the wireless access points, rolling out the phones and the programming of all the switch gear and installation of all the switch gear.
Would they be able to do this during, and get it accomplished without disrupting school?
It's our hope, actually, to do, to look at second shift work, even during the school year, to, to push out a lot of this work.
Good.
So, I see it's, you're looking at Cisco for the phone system?
Correct.
Is that also the wireless? Is it, are you looking at Cisco?
Correct. It's Cisco across the board.
So, is it day automation?
Day automation.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. One of the things, I mean, Cisco's a great product. One of the things that I've heard about is the, a lot of heavy fees once it's in place, reoccurring fees, year after year licensing. Have you looked at what the budget implications will be for that going forward?
Actually, yes. We, we, alongside of requesting and going back and forth on budget numbers and trying to get our numbers down for counts of devices, we, we did request and we do have budgetary numbers for the year-to-year service maintenance costs. And in some cases, the Cisco model has changed, that they do a limited lifetime replacement on a, a good amount of the gear, which has no future costs. So if they, if they, if the, if an access point fails, we could actually have it replaced. And there's no recurring cost for that. So, some of the higher gear still has the cost associated with it, but yes, we do have those numbers.
Okay. And one other question about, about resources going forward, I mean, I've, you know, I think our technology department, like every other technology department in the, in the school district in Dutchess County is, runs pretty thin, pretty tight. When you're looking at a BOY, BYOD system, what do you anticipate, you know, what kind of a load is that gonna put on your department for trying to manage, you know, every student who has an iPhone, iPad, you know, just all of a sudden, the number of users is gonna skyrocket?
Well, you know, aside from a plea for additional staff, which I, I think everybody's tired of hearing me ask for, but I try to be humble about it. My staff does a great job with, with the, with the few we have. Looking forward, this system, some of the key components of, of the wireless system in a way this one, this particular one is built, is that allows us to set up, basically, policies that control, that sort of automatically control when devices come in and leave the network, and give us, would allow us a little bit less time of managing device by device, I think, in the long run, because of the, the management tools that we'll, we'll have at our disposal.
Yeah, I know the switches, when you're looking at Cisco, you're, you're looking at, what do they call it, self-recognizing in a lot of ways?
Yes.
You know, and you, you turn something on and, and the system just recognizes that the IP addresses are there and it's, it's ready to go.
Yeah, yeah. So we're, we're looking to hopefully use this, this, I guess, smart technology to hopefully leverage a little bit of that, and continue our pleas for additional staff.
Okay. Sounds like a good, I mean, it sounds like a good system. Good job.
I, I think it's important to add, we didn't really go into it too much, but this technological upgrade not only puts us to the future, but just this week, in fact, we added one extra provision, it was the AC, you could talk more to the tech side of it, but this really puts us like seven, eight years out. And, and I believe they said we would have the, the best infrastructure.
Well, yeah.
Around, so.
So, when they, when they originally came to us with the proposal, it was for something called Wireless N, which N was the current standard. They've been in development of a new standard called AC. In layman's terms, all it means is faster and more data pipes. There's more, more capabilities of the access point to handle device data coming into it. What we were able to do is that, that these, these wireless access points have modules that are add-ons, and what we've included in the proposal is to go with that wireless AC standard. So this brand-new standard, so we, we're trying to future-proof this investment as well. As everybody knows, technology moves quickly. So if we can ensure that we've got a network that's solid for the next five to seven years, we're, we're gonna be in a great place. So that is something that we, we looked at from the, the, the cost side of things.
So, we've, we've spent a certain amount of time in the technology subcommittee discussing this proposal, and I think that we're gonna spend some more time fine-tuning it. But I also wanted to point out that this, this forward progress on the part of the district goes back to conversations that have been taking place for several years about the need for greater infrastructure. And it's also, let me, let me make sure that it's, I emphasize the point. This is not something where we buy technology that's gonna be outdated tomorrow. This is not a situation where we buy devices such as desktops or laptops or computers that need to be replaced two to three years down the line. This is infrastructure. This is your ability to connect to the network and get to the internet, and is flexible enough and future-proof enough that we will be able to get any device for the foreseeable future to connect to our network and use to, and leverage that device for educational purposes. So, this is a general-purpose infrastructure improvement of the same nature as improving the lighting or improving the plumbing in a building. This just has to happen, or we won't be able to leverage technology to improve our, our educational performance. I did wanna say that I think that the, the staff, particularly Forrest, has done an excellent job in guiding the district and putting this together.
Honestly, I think it's more important than plumbing and lighting. Without this kind of technology, and kids aren't gonna compete. We cannot be graduating kids that can't compete just because we didn't provide them with the proper instruction. And I think this is critical, myself. Anybody else?
I just have one last question. The, so this is a new phone system at middle school and high school?
Middle school, high school, and district office.
All right. And the high, and the, all of the elementary schools have newer systems that were put in recently?
Correct.
How long ago were they installed?
I believe it was two years ago.
Okay. And are they all Cisco?
Yes.
Products as well? Okay. All right. Thank you.
We actually, when we designed that system, we looked ahead and actually implemented a dial plan for the whole district. So we were kind of dreaming at that point, so.
Okay. One last thing, first of all, congratulations. You were almost within the 10 minutes on your presentation. So, that's a good thing. The other thing is, does each school have a traditional phone, or in case the, the server is down, or are you relying on cell phones?
It's a little bit of, it's a mix. We have, we have traditional phones that plug into our fax lines. We've kept fax lines as backups. We've actually installed a regular, plain old telephone line into the elementary systems that can call out in an emergency if we lose regular, lose network phone service, and with certain staff can call into the building as well. So, that on top of cell phones, on top of two-way radios, we've, we try to cover it.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Can we move on to the capital projects update, Wayne?
Okay, we're moving closer and closer to the finish line with a lot of projects that have gone on this summer. So, we're proud to present that we're relatively still on time and definitely within budget, and the things that are not on time are not, you know, required for this time of the year. So, we're really moving along great. The project team has been fantastic, the whole administration team over at the FDR has been supportive. Dr. Michael Rosenberger, Rousenberger has been fantastic with every detail. Our facilities and operations staff, both Jim Hubel and Elliot Garcia, watching every step of the way and every piece of asphalt that goes on the, on the ground. and every piece of asphalt that goes on the, uh, on the ground, and it's, it's, we're really at a good place. Um, I'd further like to recognize the, uh, construction management firm and the architect for, you know, getting us through a large, large project with no change orders, no significant change orders. One minimal one on some steel that was just about the height of the, the scoreboard. I guess when you see that scoreboard out there, you'll understand why there was a change order. So really minimally, on a huge project with a lot of detail, no change orders. And that's, uh, you know, um, really, uh, really a fantastic thing. So I did mention that not a hu- 100% of all the project will be completed for the 27th, as we once hoped. And I just want to go through what definitely will not be completed. Uh, the water well, um, we found an existing water well that we presented, uh, in previous time, and we're utilizing that, so there was a little bit more difficulty in getting that, uh, set up. And that will not be ready, but that doesn't need to be ready till the sod's down. So with the well not going in the soccer field, sod will not be ready on the 27th either. But it's best to do that in the fall period of time so that we can ensure that there's good growth. Um, as mentioned before, the front entry sign in basketball court, uh, will not be in on the 27th, but, or, we're, you know, the, the conversation's really heating up on how that's going to look. As we, uh, sat in project team yesterday, we looked at final budgets and we're, uh, you know, trying to allocate as much funds towards, uh, some of these things, uh, to make them, um, wonderful and safe outside of that front entrance. Uh, the field event throwing areas aren't necessary until the spring and won't be completed on the 27th. And then there's some additional parking, uh, along the backside, and the stone won't be in, you know, implemented. Um, and the, the only one that, that's a little, you know, again, this doesn't need to be done till the spring, is the track striping. So, uh, those things will, you won't see those things. Um, and there's, there's, there's some possibilities of things that, that won't be completed depending on the weather. Uh, the rubberized track surface, and this is kind of the, the one that, you know, makes us a little sad, but understandable. We're, we are on time for it, um, but if we have like a, you know, a two or three-day, uh, rain, uh, season, there's a possibility that, that, that won't be completed. And then, um, you know, our, our schedule will be pulled off a little bit because prep work has to be done to put down that rubberized track surface. So, they might have to take it down for the 27th and put it back up, um, which is a very minimal, uh, delay on that. So I just wanted to put it out there that the track is fantastic, it's wonderful, we're going to talk about all the great things now, but I wanted to start off with some of the things you might not see there, uh, that might be start, you know, coming in October and, and into the, uh, end of the fall. Um, but the paving and the tracking, the, the track surface, if you've been up there to see it, you'll see that all the paving is just about complete, there's some, some areas that they're, um, still completing. All the electrical work is complete. The last piece is hooking up the, uh, press box along with the scoreboard and the sound system. A lot of exciting things going on there. The turf, if, uh, you know, again, if you've seen that, the, all the logos are in place, all the, the, the field lines, the yard markings, it looks absolutely amazing. Uh, and if you can, you can go on our website and our Facebook account and see a lot of pictures of, uh, of, of all the, um, stuff that's been going on. The fence installation is nearly, nearly complete. Um, and, uh, also on the, the, uh, side of the tennis court that faces the track has also been, um, upgraded to a brand-new fence. And, uh, there's actually an inner track, or an outer track, uh, of fencing and walkway that goes around the entire perimeter of the field, which is a really neat, uh, concept. The bleachers, um, are just about nearly complete, and they're, they're really impressive, uh, as, as you look, get to look at them. Um, the, uh, grandstand is, is just amazing. Seating surfaces, staircases, railings have all been installed. Um, scoreboard, like I said, that's in construction as we speak. I'm going up there daily to kind of see one piece and then two pieces, then the cranes there, uh, and amazing. And it, it won't be too hard to see if you drive by that, uh, that side of the, uh, pretty impressive. So what has to come with that in the, in the next couple of weeks is several of us will be training on the new systems, uh, and the trainers will become trainers to, to the people that will be running it. Um, but some key individuals will, will be there. And then the landscape is one of the last things that'll be completed, and, uh, they were very gracious in, in upgrading us for free on all the changes that the Visual Environment Committee worked with us to change. And I was really impressed not to see a change order there. Um, and, uh, like I said, the, um, the contractors, uh, uh, you know, just down, because we go to each, each week on Tuesday, we all meet together up at the high school in the, in the trailer, and it's just been a really good experience. Even the contractors are, are there smiling and laughing and joking, and sometimes with projects, that's not always the case, so it's, it's been a great thing. Um, just some, uh, some other projects that are, uh, just about all, all complete, are the District-Wide Boiler Project, and they're doing fantastic. So, uh, they're hooked up to Central Hudson over at, uh, Violet Avenue and Hyde Park Elementary, so we have natural gas there now. Uh, the, the North Park ceiling, uh, replacement tiles, uh, is complete. And it was complete on time prior to school opening. There's a little bit of, uh, asbestos that we ran into there, but it's all been mediated and, and taken away, and it really looks fantastic. Um, the Havillam Middle School Heat Pipe Project, um, a little bit of SOFAT work left on that, but outside of that, I believe we're just about 100% on that project, and that gives us better steam pressure in the building and heat. Hopefully we'll have a great heating season. Um, some future projects that are coming up are District-Wide Signs, uh, which we've been working on for several years, as well as a $250,000 security, uh, and camera, uh, upgrade, um, which, which are being done with leftover funds. So that's where we are with capital projects.
Anybody have any questions? Excellent, Wayne, that was nine, nine minutes, very good. At, um, this time, I'd like a, uh, motion to enter public participation.
So I'm on.
Is there any discussion? I'd just like to point out that we would ask you to, uh, keep it to three minutes if you can. Uh, I know some of the things that you want to talk about is very, very important to you, and we'll play it by ear. I'm not going to cut you off right at three minutes, um, but please don't take advantage of that. Alright, hold those in favor? Suppose we're now in public participation, would anybody like to address the board? Uh, if you could go over, so you're on, on TV and they can, everybody can hear you, the mic, thank you. If you could state your name too, it would be helpful.
Dick Koller, Deer Ridge Drive, Town of Clinton. I'd just like to, uh, continue off of Greer's, uh, comment before the bullet on the board. To facilitate community engagement, I think one area that really needs that is taxes. Shaking her head. Town of Clinton, uh, is com- well, I, it, parts of the Town of Clinton are in four different school districts. Uh, the major part is probably the, uh, the Town of Hyde Park, uh, I'm sorry, the Hyde Park School District. Well, there's four different tax rates applicable to, uh, properties in the town, depending on where you live in the town. The bad guy in there is the Hyde Park School District, okay? The tax rate is 50% higher than the other tax rates, uh, which are, uh, imposed by the Millbrook, uh, School District, and I believe Pine Plains and Rhinebeck, okay? Uh, I'm not exactly sure how this came about, it's really nothing new, but the last tax bill kind of went over the red line, so to speak. A 10% increase, um, compared with last year. That is for we in the Hyde Park School District portion of the Town of Clinton. Perhaps it's time to, uh, encourage the Town of Hyde Park to look at a revale. They have not had one in a long time. And/or, and also pursue the, uh, school aid formula, the, the New York State's School Aid Formula, which I've, uh, had a little time to look at, uh, what that, uh, aid amount is for several of the school districts in the county. Uh, starting with, um, a, uh, a very high contribution to the city of Poughkeepsie, and then, uh, call it an intermediate contribution to Hyde Park, and then a very low contribution to Millbrook and, uh, some of the others. So, uh, if you could do something about that, be appreciated. Do you guys have any questions about, uh, the subject?
Well, the way we work this is, you get to talk, you get to sit down, and we get to talk. If we have any questions, uh, that we have for you, it'll be at that time. Normally, we don't do that, it's, it's kind of a, uh, a different, it's not a conversation, although, uh, many times I'd like it to be. Uh, but right now, the way the policy is written, it's not. However, uh, you're, feel free to either call me or the superintendent or anybody that you want to talk to you. And if you don't get your answer when, when we talk, um, please contact me and I will.
This gentleman here tried to call me back today, I missed his call.
Okay.
We'll connect tomorrow probably.
Is there anybody else that would like?
Thank you. Hi, um, my name is Lynn Keef, and I am not dressed appropriately for this meeting, I had not planned to come. I have to compliment Mr. Koller and his wife, Noreen, they look very nice. This was not in my plan, but my husband said, in due fairness, because we both know two people on the school board, and I have questions, that I should ask these in person, namely Kevin Sheehan and Dan Duffy, I know them personally. My question is this, I'm, I'm, I live at 197 Browning Road, Hyde Park, New York, Town of Clinton. And what Mr. Koller said is correct, other than I think it went up 9%, not 10, but that's okay. I went on Monday to the, um, county office, and my question was, who sets the tax levy? And they told me the school board and Mr. Curlander. They gave me phone numbers to get in touch with, and they told me to start with Wayne Curlander, which I did, and I have an appointment to meet him Tuesday at 2:00. My question is this, who sets the tax levy and how is it allocated? And this is a very deep question, and I wish you could answer it, but I don't know if you can. Do you, the board, and Mr. Curlander, do you do it? I was told you did, so my questions really would be addressed to you. And if you don't, do it. If you don't set that, and you don't allocate it, who sets it and who allocates it? That's all I came to say. I'm not dressed appropriately, I'm sorry for that, and I will meet with Mr. Curlander, but in decency to the people that I've known for in excess of 25 years, I'm here. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, is there anybody else? Uh, if you would go to the, the mic, please?
Noreen Koller, 140 Deer Ridge Drive, um, our physical address is Statsburg, but we're in the Town of Clinton and in the Hyde Park School District. Um, living in the rural Town of Clinton is an interesting experience. Uh, our assessments have been steady in the town, that is our appraisal of our property, for a number of years. However, our school taxes have gone up very dramatically. And this is a very common conversation with other people in the Town of Clinton who are in the Hyde Park School District. I've had conversations with, uh, probably four other people in the last two days since our tax bills arrived. So this is a concern that many of us have. I'm a retired teacher from the Hyde Park Schools, as Mr. Duffy knows, and I had Kevin Sheehan's sister in class as well. I would estimate a third of my pension from the Hyde Park Schools now is going to pay our school taxes. That's a very high percentage. And it's going to mean, according to some friends of mine, that we will all have to be making plans to change our future retirement plans. We've tried to plan carefully, you know, predicting expenses. With the Hyde Park School expenses going up so high, we simply can't do that. So we need your help. Anything you can do to aid our population would be very, very helpful to us, so thank you.
Would anybody else like to be?
Doug Eglington, Fairview, Town of Poughkeepsie. Uh, I'll just, two things, first thing, I'll just echo what these people have just said. My assessment came down 6,000 this year, it'd come down a couple of years ago. Yet my school tax this year went up 11%, and it's unacceptable. And I know, I know that, you know, you know me, I've been here, I know, I know why it goes up. But you've got to do something about it, okay? Now, number two, the next item on the agenda, goals for the school board. That's really why I came tonight. And, uh, I'm having trouble suggesting to you how to handle this. I thought I might have better suggestions tonight, but thought about it a lot, and it's difficult. So, my basic suggestion is, at least once a month on the board meeting agenda, you put the goals item up top. And the goal should be, of course, to improve the student output, to improve students, okay? Now, if you put that on once a month on your meeting, it should have two parts. A, what have we done in the, since the last meeting to improve students in this district? And number two, what can we do here in the future for the same thing? And that's going to be very difficult to talk to, but it should be your primary goal. I have one additional thought because of the, the, uh, this questionnaire where most people didn't know what the district is doing. You've really got to establish this primary goal and push and push and push and push at it. And my observation, as you know, I've been to these meetings for three years now, is that you spend too much time as a board talking about, tonight for example, stuff, stuff, and, and some of this stuff is the blessed New York State Department of Education and all their nonsense requirements. But if you can cut down the time you spend on, uh, you know, improving the, uh, uh, infrastructure and the building stuff, maybe you can spend more time on the primary goal, which should be how to improve each student coming out of the system, which you don't have a terribly good record on, like, you know, I'm a first. Thank you.
Thank you, does anybody else like to, uh, uh, may have a motion to go out of public participation?
So I'm on.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hold those in favor? Suppose we're now out of public participation, would anybody like to respond?
Yes, I would. So, first I wanted to make it clear to everyone who talked about the tax situation that we are acutely aware of the, the costs and the, the expenses of taxes and the fact that they have been increasing. And the thing about, uh, increasing taxes on a percentage basis is that it compounds. So the 2% that it increased last year means that the 3% this year is actually more like 3.2 relative to two years ago. So, we're acutely aware of that, and I think that we work very diligently to keep an eye on expenses, which is one reason why our meetings look at boring stuff like infrastructure. Um, the cost of utilities, the cost of energy. Unfortunately, I think that our, uh, responsibility is, is a two-pronged, uh, responsibility. One is to deliver the highest quality education that we can possibly deliver. The second one is to do it at a reasonable cost. So, I think that, uh, you know, I would prefer to spend the vast majority of my time talking about how do we make our education better. But unfortunately, it's that financial, you know, that charge of financial responsibility that takes up what appears to be the majority of our time in the meeting. To directly answer, um, I believe it was Lynn Keef's question about whether or not we set the tax levy and allocate it. We do set the tax levy. Now, let's review that for a moment, and I'm afraid I'm going to get a little long-winded here. Hopefully no more long-winded than I need to.
Mr. Curlander on Tuesday, he can explain this to me.
Okay.
In fact, you are saying that you do set it, and the figures that you just ran by, the percentages?
What's are 100% right.
So.
Nothing like what we have in town.
Because we don't allocate it.
This isn't a, this isn't a conversation.
That's correct, and I will discuss this with Mr. Curlander on Tuesday.
So, um.
You answered the question, I, I thank you for that.
So, I do want to go into a little more detail because these, these meetings are televised, I think there's going to be other people that may have these questions. The tax levy is actually what we voted for last spring. It's the gross amount of the budget that isn't covered by aid that we feel is necessary to pay for our, our annual expenses for the school district.
Give the board.
I'm sorry, it, it's not, it's not a conversation, I'm sorry. So, so yes, the board, you know, you asked the question, I can answer it. Yes, the board set a budget, we talked about how much the cost was going to be. We got an estimate for what the, the average increase was going to be. We got an estimate for what the, the average increase was going to be. We're completely aware and spent a great deal of time on, on budgeting and, and cost. After the budget was approved, the overall process is this. You figure out what the, the complete cost of the levy is. You figure out the, the gross value of each town in the district. And then you divide the levy up proportionally. And then you divide each town up by the, the value of each assessed property. Now, what happened is that the state estimates that the total cost, the total assessed value in Hyde Park dropped. And therefore, the burden, the cost burden shifted, shifted to the other towns.
That's not the whole story.
Well, I think that if you would like to, please call me at home. I, I wouldn't mind having a conversation with you.
Could you tell me your name and a phone number? I will.
My name is Steve Mittermeyer. My phone number is 229-1888. It's public information. It's on the website. I don't have any problem talking to anybody about this.
Okay. As I said, I don't mean to repeat, but I do have a meeting with Mr. Curlander Tuesday.
Okay.
I will do that first. Thank you very much, Steve.
Anyway, it's, my understanding, Wayne, please correct me if I'm wrong, we don't have any flexibility in how we calculate the levy. We don't have any flexibility in how we allocate the levy. In other words, the proportion of the value of the assessed, total assessed values of the towns determines how much each town must contribute to the, the district. It is a little more complicated because there are calculations for star rebates and so forth. I also believe that we do not have any flexibility and cannot negotiate with the state in terms of how much aid we get. Is that also a true statement?
Work harder to get more, but basically, your allotment to.
Please use the mic.
As what, you know, what you can do, just got to make sure that you follow the formula 100%.
So we do our utmost to apply for all of the aid to which we're allowed, but we can't negotiate. We can't ask for more simply because we think we need more.
But you established the.
We, I'm sorry, we can't have a, a conversation.
Isn't it true also, Wayne, that, that?
Yes. I'm sorry. That's it. Done.
Wayne, isn't it also true that we have nothing to do with how the state deems the values of each and every town, that that's dictated to us? So that when we say our budget is going up 3%, that's exactly what it's doing. But the state dictates who's going to pay what percentage of that 3% or of the total budget, I should say.
That's correct. You're absolutely 100% correct.
We don't do that. That comes afterwards. We don't even know what the state's going to do until afterwards.
I think an important distinction, which was in, in last week's presentation, or two weeks ago's presentation on the 29th, and these are all available, I think I spoke with both of you, please go to, to Board Docs and look up these documents, is the difference between the tax levy increase and the tax rate increase. What the board establishes is what the overall levy goes up from one year to the next. It's the equalization rate, the assessed values for which the district has no control over. That, that shows the proportion or the division of how those, that tax levy is apportioned over our five jurisdictions or towns that pay into that system. What Steve mentioned is the market values in Hyde Park have dropped such a, to such a significant degree that the equalization rate that the state provides us increased, took them out, it took a portion of their tax payment that they would normally be responsible for and shifted it out. And that's the scenario that we're in right now.
I, I think it would be helpful for you to understand, when we did our figures and we said what the tax increase was going to be, we said it was going to be 2.73% approximately. And that was based on data that we had at the time, which said that the Town of Hyde Park was, had an equalization rate of .56, which means you take whatever your assessed value is, you divide it by .56 and you get your market value. And then had that stayed, and then the equalization rate is, if it's going to change, changes in August. This is three months after we have set the budget. In this case, it did change. Had it not changed, every town's tax increase would have been 3.03%, which was almost what we said, 2.73. We said approximately 2.73. Every single town, Hyde Park, Clinton, Pleasant Valley, Ryanbeck, every one of them, Gipsy, would have been 3.03%. Because of the change the state made and the way it was, I hope you understood about the total wealth and the percentage of the total wealth. Because of that change, the Town of Hyde Park lost 9% of its value, $151 million. The, the proportion of the tax levy, the amount raised by taxes, that was, the Town of Hyde Park was responsible for, went down.
Kevin, I want to talk so badly, you have no idea. But I said I would be quiet, and I will. I will address my arguments on Tuesday.
Okay. But for people out in, out in.
I'm sorry, Linda, but we do, we do have to explain what's going on because we have many more people, we hope, than the dozen people that are sitting here listening to our explanation. There's hundreds of people on the, on the line that are watching, and they're not going to be at the meeting you're attending.
No, I fully.
So we need, so we need to deal with the issue a little bit in order to bring them online.
I need to deal with it too, but I don't want to drive anybody crazy.
Well, unfortunately, it's, it's a question that you had every right to ask, and it's a question that we need to answer, but we need to answer it for everyone. Or what is going to happen is we're going to be dealing with the question from 30 individuals one at a time, which is not a very productive way of doing it.
I'm going to address my questions to him so I don't drive you crazy. My husband suggested I come here because I know both of you. When he was right, I'm glad I did.
All right, but let, let, we, we could have, we, in all honesty, we could have been done with this three or four minutes ago if we don't keep interrupting with the questions.
Okay, I'm done.
All right. Since my name was mentioned and Kevin's name, and Kevin's not here today, I will rehash what was said. Basically, we set a budget and present it to the, to the, the towns that make up our school district. The vote that is taken either accepts or rejects the budget we propose to teach our kids. At that point, our control over everything that follows is done. Once the budget is accepted by the people and voted upon and accepted, we're done with any control we have on the allocations of the tax levy, the amount of money we are being requested to pay. But unfortunately, the way the system is set up, there are several parameters that get involved in determining the levy, the amount you see on your bill, that are not available. They should be, but they're not available at the time that we take the vote in May. There's information that is not gathered, which is the total assessment per town, which changes from year to year. You know, like in Hyde Park, the Stop and Shop facility opened up recently and has been added, I believe, to the tax rolls. So the value of that property has been added to the tax rolls and has been added to the real property value of Hyde Park. There is also what they call an equalization rate, which effectively translates the assessment value you see on your bill to what the state feels is the real selling price or real value of the property if you put it on the market. The fact that four of the five districts or four of the five towns that are represented by Hyde Park have done reassessments in, in near time results, in fact, that three of the communities are now, have a 1.0 equalization rate. Their assessment value and their real property value are equal. One township is at 1.1, which means their assessment has, their real property value has actually gone up a little bit beyond what the assessment value is. Hyde Park, which was at .56, which basically said our assessed values were somewhere about half of what the real property value was, was upgraded, was changed by the state recently to .62, which basically said, if you had a $200,000 assessment and you thought your property was worth $400,000, the state now tells you it's not worth $400,000, it may be worth $360,000. That was across the town. So what they're saying is the, the people in Hyde Park's property is worth less money on the market this year than it was last year. So any, any intent of using that property for retirements has gone down the tubes a little bit also. So what is affecting you today is affecting the rest of them over the next 10 years. And we have no control. The only people that can reassess the property, the only people that can reassess the value is the town. The town is the only one that can request, implement, and pay for a reassessment. The town has chosen not to do that over an extended period of time. And it's no, I, I do not believe it's longer than the period that preceded that one. If you go back and look at the prior assessment, not the past one, but the one before that, there was even a wider gap between that assessment from one to two than there has been from two to three. But with the recession in there, it, it's, it's had a very terrible effect on value. So we have no control over any of that. So what goes into it, at the time that we passed the vote, we have none of these figures. So all we can do is work with what we saw as, as been history over the previous years. And the historic change of assess, or the equalization rate has not been as large as it was this past year. So when we projected and announced and said with fair confidence at that time that we felt that this year the distribution would be equal, didn't work out. Two factors got in. Even though the assessed value of Hyde Park went up, it actually went up by over $6 million. The assessments on the tax rolls, the real property value of Hyde Park went down because of the change in equalization rates, which meant that Hyde Park therefore was being requested to provide less of the tax levy than the other four townships. But as a board, we have no control of that. As a board, we cannot ask for a reassessment. As a board, we cannot question the equalization rate. The best explanation I've ever gotten about the equalization rate is the town, the state simply takes properties that have sold in the past year, compares the sale price of those properties to what the assessment value was, and determines what percentage, one way or the other, it is. And that's where the assessed, that's where the equalization rate comes from.
I'm not questioning.
I'm not, I'm, I'm not, I'm not going to answer your question. I'm just telling you the way it go. It's not a matter of questioning. Linda, we're trying to explain this to people that are watching me today.
I understand.
That, that, we're trying to explain to them what it is. Now, unfortunately, Wayne made a, a long presentation going over all the calculations and all of the numbers that was on the last agenda, to prep, to prep people for the receipt of the tax bills. He spent some half hour with questions going over how the, the tax levy was arrived at and what contributed to this variation in what was, what we thought was going to be the fact and what turned out to be the fact. And we explored for well over several hours whether anything we could do in terms of fund balance or anything else to try and offset that because we felt that, you know, this was a very unfortunate situation. Every scenario we went through didn't result in any benefit, equalization across the lines. And that's anything we have control over, we can do about that. And as a result, we just went ahead with the way we proposed it and said, there's nothing we can do to alter it, to mitigate it, or to change it.
Okay.
And my phone number is on the website, and if you want to talk to me after you talk to Wayne, feel free.
Okay, I'd like, one last thing. We have talked to the town about reevaluations, what it would cost. We have, there are a number of concerned people who are perhaps banding together and bringing that issue to the town and seeking a solution to the reeval. As far as we know at the present time, it is a very costly process. I heard a number of like $900,000.
Funds are built.
So, so that, those funds would have to be found, but we, we, we are talking to the town, and we will continue.
I'm seeing the point that I've made.
Okay. We do. We, we understand it.
Doug.
Just one thing.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to, to address Doug's, I mean, good points.
I mean, we need, you know, it's focus. You know, I, I think that everybody sitting here at the table is very aware of, of what it is that we do. And unfortunately, we do get kind of tied down or buried in the minutia at times. And I haven't, I'm not sure how long we just spent talking about taxes, but that certainly didn't help any child in the district. But it has to be done. You know, it's, it's those things. And, and when we talk about, you know, computer infrastructure, and we talk about any of the capital projects that we're working on, I mean, you know, it, it's, it's all for the goal of educating our students. And, and it all has to be discussed. And, and they're not discussions that can happen outside of this meeting. You know, these are things that we are here doing the business of the district. And, you know, it's, it's in the face of the public, it's, but it doesn't mean that, I guess I'd, I got the impression from you that you, you don't feel like we're focused on, on what we're trying to do, but I think we are. I think we are. It's just all the little steps that we have to go through to educate our students. And it, and it's all important, and I know that you're not saying it's not important. It just, you know, you're, you're holding our feet to the fire, and I can appreciate that for making sure that we're doing what we need to be doing to educate our students, to make them the most prepared they can be for careers, for education, for life. And I, I just think that it needs to be said that, you know, we're, we're, we're doing every, you know, we're, we're trying to do everything we can.
Are you addressing that to me?
No, I'm, I'm to Doug. I'm responding to Doug's comments, and, and they were good. I mean, we're, it's what we've got to focus on, but, you know, they're all steps in the right direction.
And I'd also like to add that we do regularly present to the board on our academic program. We have reports several times throughout the year where our sole focus is the academic program. And I just want to reiterate that the board is a board of education that sets policy. And in addition to setting policy, our board members are involved at every level, at every level of the academic program in several ways. And several of our board members, in fact, all of our board members sit on subcommittees. But I did want to spend a minute to say that we have a comprehensive academic strategic plan. All of our academic goals and plans are online. I invite you to any one of our schools, and our academic goals and plans are operationalized, visible. And, and, you know, again, we spend all of our time, when we are not at board meetings, doing 100% of our time on the instructional program. So I, I just don't want it to be misleading that the board's discussion about goals is an indication that the academic isn't at the forefront of, of our community. And I know that all of our board members spend quite a bit of time supporting our academic program, sitting on the Academic Strategic Planning Committee, or the Technology Committee, or the Special Education Committee. So we are 100% every single day that we come into this building is focused on the instructional program. And if we need to communicate that more, we will. But if you review our board agendas, there's, there, over the course of a year, there are numerous academic presentations, all with the goal of improving our programs. And in fact, at our last meeting, it was about how we measure our program. So I just didn't, I know, Doug, you're a regular. We so appreciate your coming, and, and I, I think you and I realize, and the board realizes what you're talking about is the board setting a goal. But again, as mentioned earlier, we have a lot of people who listen in on our audience, and we don't want anybody to feel that, again, we have 700 employees coming in every day that focus on the academic program.
Anybody else? By the way, I actually have been thinking about this. A little line on top of an agenda is a good idea. line on top of an agenda is a good idea. I think it's a good idea. So, and it doesn't have to be much, it just has to be, we're aware. And I think that's, that's a good thought. So if we could move on now, I would like to start our discussion of the Board of Education goals. We have a few that were written down, and we can put up there. And anybody else that wants to jump in and add things? So we'll just start at the top. I'll read the ones that are there. And if anybody has another goal, please let us know, and we'll write it down. So for academics, perform an analysis of New York State test results from 2012, 2013, where performance was significantly lower than our district's performance in the previous year. And when compared to other local districts for some same grain level and subject area for the same year, develop an action plan to improve academic performance and complete it by March 1st. That, what I get out of that is, we should develop an action plan to improve academic performance and complete it by March 1st. But I don't know what everybody else gets out of that. Receive quarterly updates regarding how Common Core outcomes have been integrated into classroom lesson plans. Anybody have any other ones that they want to put forth? Anybody want to say any words on the ones that are there?
One of them is in the academics, but I would like to focus, starting this year, on the new academic programs and changes that we're making in the district by making sure we have the SMART goals of the, of the implemented changes. We made a change, I think it's Avid, is it Avid?
Yeah.
Change at the high school, which is intended to improve the outcome of our economically disadvantaged students that have no prior history of college students in their families, by introducing them at the beginning, at their freshman year, as to setting their goals and where they want to be, supporting them and understanding the steps necessary to get there, the way they select their courses and their programs to get there, and the other things they need to do to achieve that and to provide a better opportunity for them to be successful in their college applications, or tech school applications, or whatever it is that meets their goals as they go through the years. I'd like to see what those SMART goals are. I would like also, when we get a review of the program, have that review of the program specifically target those SMART goals and the success we've achieved. And of course, the first one I looked at was Avid, and the first thing I said is, well, that's nice, we want to do that, we'd like to do that. But it seems to me for the next four years, all we can do is discuss how many students participate in the program, what kind of support we gave, what kind of setups we made, because we're going to have no results until we get to their senior year.
Okay, can I just interject? By SMART goals, you're talking about the administrators' SMART goal.
Well, there was a presentation.
Not the board's SMART goal.
No, no. Smart referring to a way of setting goals that focuses you and measure, provides an ability to measure them.
Right.
So the first thing, if we, if the, if the program has a SMART setup, it says that it's already established the parameters by which they can measure success. Because you and I, Doug, we had a discussion about that when we said, the board wants to set some goals for our students, but we're not the ones that implement those goals, we're not the ones that do the program. So we're setting standards and, and goals for the administrators, which is totally unfair. We want to tell them we'd like to see improvements, but we need to be able to measure how we're doing with the money we've invested. And that has to be based on how they came to decide which programs they wanted to implement, and how they were going to measure the success of those programs. And I think this may be a way of getting both things done at the same time.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted, with Avid as the example, it is, the implementation of Avid is one of my SMART goals this year. So some of that data I'm already collecting for Avid for the first year. But also, the way that Avid's system works is that you submit data throughout the year, and they compile that and give you reports. So there's national longitudinal data on Avid and its effectiveness. And they look at things like, you know, are students enrolled in honors AP classes, you know, graduation rate, where they go, they track. So that's really embedded. So, you know, and this is the first year.
But we're introducing it in the first year at the freshman level, right?
Correct.
So some of those measures that we're looking for that are of significance won't be available to.
Some we won't see. We just have what it looks like in the districts that have had it for longer, and then we start submitting data. And there's some outcomes we would see right away, like what classes kids are signed up for in 10th grade.
And what I'd be looking for in, in reviews of that would be comparisons to successful districts, districts that have had this program and worked with it for a while, and say, well, what percentage of the kids did they get to participate, what kind of courses? How are we tracking against the track records of districts that were successful?
And the nice thing about Avid is they really do that for you.
Which is fantastic.
It is.
But we've been, we've been a long time in arriving at collecting the data we need to interpret the results and doing it in a manner that it can be presented to us in a timely fashion. You know, how often do we, we go through and take tests and evaluations and measurements, and then we get a presentation from Cora or one of the other involved in the, the academic thing? But the presentation is for what, two years prior? You know? How do you take advantage of that information? Or what, what did we do for two years when we didn't have this information? It's, you know, which is driving me to saying that this computer-based testing, I believe, will not only provide the fact that the, the actual test answers will be available immediately, but that the grading and cut scores and everything else can be done very quickly, and we can get the results back in a timely fashion, which means we can get the results back when it allows us to influence what we do in the following year based on the testing of a group this year. In other words, we should have results that allow us to influence what we're going to teach, or how we're going to teach, or what we're going to do with fourth graders next year to improve their results based on the testing we got for their third grade testing.
I just add, Dan, I think one of the things that you're talking about is something that you challenged us to do a year ago. And it was the whole idea of the board not necessarily setting the goal of, you know, this many students demonstrating increased performance, or doing the data analysis itself, but expecting us to come and share with you where we've spent money on something like the leveled literacy intervention program. What has that looked like? How much money have we spent, and what results have we had?
Right, exactly.
And I, I think it was, as Gura mentioned, at the last meeting, maybe two meetings ago, I think it was only the last one, I shared an update of that, so that we're getting away from just sharing state test results with you that, that are perhaps a year old or more. And now we are reporting on things like assessments that happen a couple of times over the course of the year so that we can show progress. And I'm just wondering if your comments are, are taking us back to that as a goal for the board, and really thinking about holding us accountable for coming back to you to say, here's what we are doing to address improvement in, in student performance and outcomes. And to do that around new programs like Avid, continued work around the internal assessments that we do that aren't relying on state ed mandates. I think, I, I'm just reminded of your request of us a year ago, and thinking that it's probably still really appropriate.
Unfortunately, well, Doug is still here, but what I find becomes more and more relevant to me is we have limited funds. And we just can't add program after program after program, hoping one out of the four we added will be successful and provide advancement, and continue to fund the other three because we put them in. We need to reevaluate, and we need to evaluate those, the success of those programs. And maybe they are successful. But is their success justifying the cost of implementation? Can we invest the money elsewhere? Are we getting an overlap because of successes of other programs? And unfortunately, I think, Cora, you and I disagree a little bit on this one, is that I think it is a valid perspective to analyze how successful I can see the programs in Hyde Park by comparing our success on state testing to the, to the success of other districts around us, especially since part of what you discussed last week indicated that we can try and pull out of the overall results, groupings based on certain classifications of kids, those English as second learners, economically disadvantaged, ethnic groups, those other areas. So we can try and balance the district out, because every district has a totally different makeup of those numbers and those peoples. And it's made it difficult with aggregate or group to get results, to compare them. But we can, what's the word, disaggregate?
Yeah, exactly.
Break it down into things, we can compare one to the other, we can get a better feel for it. And I'm not looking to say we did bad. I'm looking to see what, what districts apparently or seem to have done better. And therefore, we would want to make, make contact with those to say, what are you guys doing? And compare it to what we're doing, and say, what is the difference?
Yeah.
How can we benefit from your lessons?
Yeah.
And share our lessons with other people the same way.
Yeah.
Because we don't have unlimited funds to go in every direction.
Yeah. And if I can just take a minute to clarify, I'm not sure we really do disagree. When I suggested maybe it was our work and not the board's to do the data analysis, I was suggesting that at a board meeting, which is when you all do that work, that might not be the best of, best use of time for you to sit and do data analysis.
True.
Rather, that should be our work that we bring and share with you, and then hear your concerns and interests in it. And certainly comparing our results to our, our neighbors. And I would go beyond our, our local area and look to similar schools across the state, which we do. I think that has a really valuable place as well. And I, I think the balance of that work and looking at the internal assessments that we do gives us a richer picture.
And I would share something that I don't know if you're aware of, Cora, I was very surprised by. This week started, the schools, the Catholic or parochial school systems, most of them started classes this week, and most of them had, like we did, meet the staff type and, and things. And at one of the local schools, school that my grand, two of my grandsons are attending, the parents were informed that beginning this year, they will be participating in the state assessment evaluations of three through eight. And that it wasn't a choice they necessarily made, but it was a decision made by the archdiocese informing them that they would participate. And it is interesting on my behalf, because I think it's, it's a great thing to be able to finally say we can compare apples to apples, because that's always been a question. But the surprise to me was knowing the cost factors that we see in going forward with this testing and computer-based testing, I don't know if they understand that. And I'm basically really concerned that they will not truly understand the cost factors that may be involved in them going forward. And I'll say it publicly here, I wonder if at some point, when we have contact with the two parochial school systems, elementary school systems that exist within Hyde Park School District, when we have contact, and I assume we have contact with them at times, that we offer to them the opportunity, you know, that maybe they would like to come and discuss what our experiences with, has been in the one year we participated, and what our feelings are about the costs and evaluations in the future. Because I, I feel that all of the kids in our district, geographic area, are children we should be supporting, whether they come to our school, whether they're homeschooled, or whether they're in a, a private school setting within the district.
Okay, I'm having a little trouble getting a goal out of this. So you want to take a crack at what you want? You want the board, we already get reports. Or do you want the board to visit a comparable school and see what they're doing? I don't see what the board is doing here, that's, that's.
For this year, I think what I'd like is to get reports back showing the effectiveness by different groups within our school, and how they compare it to local school districts.
Okay, that would have to be a comparable, a comparable.
You know, if we get those reports, then we can start coming up with some goals as to what we, we want to use those goals to advance the success of our kids. But until we know what those results are, it may be difficult to determine what that next step is. But until we take the first step, there's no way we can legitimately intellectually take that next step.
Does that differ from the first goal that's stated here?
Well, it's really wordy, that first goal. But that's the general idea, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I, I mean, I, I think it is wordy, but it's, it's, there's a lot there. I mean, you know, performing an analysis of the New York State test results for 2013, where the performance is lower.
Well, it would have to be compared to other local districts that have the same student makeup and comparable student population. Otherwise, it's not going to be.
Maybe it's appropriate. Maybe, maybe there's a word in there to say that it has to be comparable schools or appropriate.
I don't know. How many other, Cora? There, I mean, it's.
Yeah, there, there are.
There's lots of them that are the same size, but there aren't a lot that are.
Yeah, but I think, I think if you extend, if you extend the reach, there are a way to find similar schools with similar demographics, but it might be one from Rockland County, one from Duchess, one from Ulster. So as long as we don't think of the general area as Duchess County. In Duchess County, we're most similar to Dover. So we would take Dover as one of our starting points. We would take, I actually have a list of four school districts that all, that are very similar with similar demographics, and they're all within the four county area that we can compare to, so.
Right.
I guess my question is still, what's the relationship between what the board will be doing as a goal and what strategic planning would be doing? Just so it's clear.
I suggest that the goal be to receive a comparative analysis of our district's performance on standardized testing.
Would you state that again?
I suggest that our goal be to receive a comparative analysis of our district's performance on standardized testing, standardized test results.
I don't see that as a goal myself, but I'm having a little trouble as to how I'm gonna.
Good timing, just saying.
Well, we just had a lengthy conversation about the fact that we wanted to understand our position academically, not only relative to programs that we have seen instituted in our district, but also, we want to understand our standing relative to similar districts, however that's defined. The only way I can see that we do that is to receive a report, an analysis on that topic, because we're not going to do it. We don't have the chops to do that. We're not educators. But we do want to maintain and control and set policies such that we achieve high educational results. And so, among the things that we need to do is educate ourselves on where we stand, so that then we can build policy and, and drive administration to deliver those results. So maybe, instead of saying, receive a comparative analysis, educate ourselves on the district's performance relative to other similar districts. I mean, that's.
I'd be happier if it had the word programs in there, as to what effective programs another, another school just might be using that we're not using. If it's, I'm assuming that's, that's something you were including in that without saying it, that, you know, we were gonna, you know, if, if we, if we evaluate what we do against what somebody else does, the same program, and see which one is effective, that's one thing. It's another thing to say, we do this, somebody else does something else, and they appear to be more effective or less effective than we are. And I think you can get some information out of that. We, we already get reports on what we do.
Yeah, but I think, I think we need, I, I think part of what the underlying tone I hear about this is. I hear about this is that we need to have those reports done a little differently in terms of, it has to have a relevancy to the two items you discussed. How relevant to our success or non-success were the initiatives we put in place to try and prove?
That's different, yeah.
And the second thing is, what, we made choices of things that are out there for our district. When we compare it to comparable districts otherwise that have different choices, were they successful? And is, you know, then we got the rather touchy thing of discussing, well, did they make a better choice? Did we make a better choice? How do we compensate? Because we can't, we can't afford to do both. We can't throw five programs out there and say, one of them's bound to fix the problem and go year after year funding all five because we've got to fund the ones that are giving us a good bang for the buck.
Well, I don't, I also don't think it's, it seems like a really big task to not only compare results, but start to look at how they were achieved. I mean, what you just, what I heard you just say, what I understood you just say, is that not only do we analyze the results relative to another district, but analyze the methods that went into it from, in both districts and then.
Will we find a discrepancy, a significant difference between what we did and what they did? We may have a program that achieves a benefit of X for our kids. They may have a program that achieved the same one. We compare the two, they both advanced the same. The value added for both of them seems to be comparable. All right? Now, that doesn't seem to be, we could, we could always evaluate and say, well, how did they do it? How did we do it? But if we're doing the same thing or achieving the same results, what difference do we make? We're going to both be happy with the results. Well, we see a discrepancy in what they're doing compared to what we're doing, like their economically disadvantaged kids advanced twice as far as we did over the year. Maybe it's not what we're teaching, but the way we're teaching it or how we make it relevant to those kids that is important. And I feel this is definitely true. You can teach the material, but if you don't make it relevant to the kids, they're going to be sitting there just, you know.
Sure.
Leaning their thumbs and saying, that's nice, yeah. Doesn't mean anything to me.
Okay, but coming back to the task, you know, if, you're, what you're saying insinuates that not only are we asking our staff to look at the results relative to a school that is similar to ours or a district that's similar to ours, but then you're asking for an additional analysis that looks at the methods they used.
If there, if there is, if there isn't an added, an added value in what they did compared to what we did, if they, they had a significantly better improvement, significantly better result than we did, then we want to investigate that.
So I think, basically, what you're talking about is learn best methods from other districts.
Yep.
That's really where you're going.
You know, this is what we do. We look at best practices out there. We always analyze them and, yeah.
Is that not what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay. So how do we do that without overburdening our administrators? I mean, that sounds like a research project.
How do we improve our kids to where we need to get them if we don't do that?
So.
Educators are free to jump in at any time.
Wouldn't we have to know how effective our programs are to begin with?
Right.
You know, we rely on professional administrators to present to us programs like Avid, like the other ones that Cora presented to us.
Yeah, I'd like to suggest that, oh, well, I don't want to. I'd like to suggest that, you know, the programs that we've brought in, we've brought in because they did result in improvements in other districts. I'd also like to recommend that, I think the goal that we had last year, that Dan had last year, I would like to continue that goal. We just started that goal. We saw some improvement in some areas, not so much in others, but it was our first year and we were looking at some programs that we've just implemented. And I think unless we continue to, you know, monitor those systems, so just take the level literacy or the Fountas and Pennell. I know I don't have last year's goals in front of us, but I thought the goal we developed last year, Dan, and under your, was, was very helpful for us and we would like to continue that. We'd like to be able to say that this is what it looked like last year. First of all, the given is we brought in Fountas and Pennell because it is one of the best programs that has the biggest track record. We brought in NWEA because of their 30 years' worth of research and all of the results that they have. So if you want us to do a little more, I like, Dan, your suggestion, that the next time we present a program that we want to bring in, we set it up as a SMART goal. We're going to bring in Avid and here's the SMART goal for Avid. I think that's what you were saying, that as we bring a program in, bring it in and structure it so that it's a SMART goal. But I know these aren't my goals, but they turn into my goals. Your goals are my goals. But I really, this is the goal from last year. Through regular presentations from the Strategic Planning Committee, review non-mandated academic programs instituted in the last three years which are still being utilized to ascertain effectiveness. And we have, we have that data and what we'd like to really be able to do is get to the point where next year, when you see that, you see that growth continuum. So I think you had a great academic goal last year and I know Cora and I would like to continue that because we found that to be very useful, both for motivating and sustaining the implementation of these programs. It was very helpful. One of the things that we know will get us further regardless of, well, first of all, you have to choose a research-based program, but the more that we can promote the use of data to improve instruction, the further along we will be. And our teachers are now on board with knowing that we are collecting the data, they're starting to collect the data, they're starting to use the data to say, my kids are here and I know I'm going to test or monitor again in another 10 weeks and I want to see the growth. They just started to feel success with this. And so my, I proposed that your goal last year was worth pursuing a second year.
And I was fine with that until we started talking about SMART goals and I had a little trouble making that into a SMART call. Yes, it's a nice, it's a nice one, but everybody seemed to agree last meeting.
Cora and I could turn that into a SMART call. We can turn that into a SMART call.
The only other thing I would add, maybe by way of reassuring you, is that in reference to seeking out from our neighbors in the region, what they're doing and what's working, that's actually identified in our professional development plan. The newest one of that was just completed over the summer, is on the website under Instructional Services. But there's a very specific reference to making opportunities available for our staff to be communicating with and visiting other districts to talk about what they're doing and learn just exactly the kinds of things that you were referencing. So there is an emphasis on that in our professional development plan.
Yeah, I'll just say one more thing and then we can, but the, for example, you know, the state assessments changed significantly this year and there are webinars to look at the assessment and how it was scored. And through Cora's office and Jen and Kim, we are, and even the building principals, we are anticipating that a very large number of our teachers are signing, are going to attend that webinar as a collective group so they can have those conversations. And that will be a webinar that is joined by people throughout the county. So, you know.
I'm staring at our boy Forrest, who has gotten no time to do anything, but is it permissible and possible to record those webinars in a manner that would allow people like myself that have rather unusual and screwed up schedules, that cannot very often align my time with the webinars broadcast to be able to view it?
I would suggest starting with Engage New York, the same website that Greer was mentioning earlier, because it's full of things from State Ed around the Common Core implementation and replication of programs and all of the information that's being shared with teachers is posted there. And many of those webinars are posted after the fact so that people can watch them.
Yeah, I shared that I spent a long day in New York with my daughter in Barnes and Noble where she was reviewing books on Common Core standards. And it was a great revelation to me in the sense that it pointed out how little I knew about the true insights and the true significance of Common Core standards. So I find that a big hole that I've got to somehow work on and get myself on board as to the differences and nuances of it. And the first step I'm going to be taking is I'm going to attend one of the parent seminars on that to, as a starting point. And if it doesn't help me, then I'm going to come crying to somebody and say, I need more help than that.
Okay, let's try and go on. So we'll either recreate that last year as a SMART call.
Yeah, we can do that.
The only thing that's new for this year is the Common Core, so that's why I put down, receive quarterly or some kind of updates as to how that's going, rather than waiting till the end of the year and finding out, didn't go, didn't go so good, you know. So, all right, so let's move on to board operations.
Doug.
And see if we can do a little bit better job here.
So are we going to strike the first goal, which is perform an analysis of the New York State test results, replace that with last year's goal rewritten as a SMART goal?
We're gonna, I think what we're gonna do is leave it there until we get a wordsmanship redo of it that meets our satisfaction from Cora and Greer and then, and then move that one in. Stay with this because we've got something.
I think we're saying the same thing, Dan.
Yes, we are.
And are we keeping the second one as stated? Receive quarterly updates regarding.
That's the new thing that wasn't here last year, so I would like to have that there.
Okay.
And it could be worded differently, but.
Okay.
You want to word it differently?
It just doesn't seem like we discussed it.
Yes, I know we haven't.
Okay, is that where you were moving us?
I'd like to put one comment on that quarterly. I think quarterly means quarterly and we need to avoid something that's happened in the past where we get into the crunch of budget and other aspects of our job get lost until we get done with it. I think we can't keep pushing these because the, this expansive time that we get.
We can put it on the planner. We'll put it on the planner, it'll be on, by the way, you know, the planner will be on and is on the board, on Board Doc, so we will add that at the appropriate date.
Right.
So is there any other discussion about the Common Core and whether or not you think it should be on as a goal or not?
That's fine, just make sure there's dates attached to it.
Okay.
By the way, I could take credit for the first evil goal that was written there. You know, be new to the board, made an attempt.
Oh, by the way, Kevin.
Not going to overly argue for it, I just thought it was kind of neat. I thought it would generate some discussion and evidently it did, so.
It did.
Good job.
While you were gone, Kevin, your name and my name came up several times in the public participation. So you might want to look at the.
We can talk about that later.
Tape of that.
Yeah, we will, we'll look at it later.
Doug, can I make just one comment about, and I pulled up what our goal was last year and.
Right.
The only, the only thing I question on that is, it says, talk about new approaches to teaching instituted in the last three years which are still being utilized to ascertain effectiveness. What's the magic of three years? Why wouldn't we look at everything we're doing rather than just what we've done in the last, that would suggest that if we've done it four years ago, we don't look at that?
Well, because up until three years ago, we changed ships a couple of times and we didn't solidify on the programs as well as we have in the last three years, is my opinion, so.
But this says we're going to look at new approaches to teaching instituted in the last three years. So we're only looking at things that we've instituted in the last three years.
Well, that, it means that for this goal, we're going to look at those programs, but the New York State Regents have been going on for many years and we still look at those. So, so the goal isn't to, I think my interpretation is the goal is very specific to, if we brought in some new programs, let's make sure they're working. It doesn't mean that we're not looking and reporting on things that have been ongoing. It just means that the board goal, the very specific board goal is to do that.
And that's just what I want to be clear on.
That's a valid question, yeah.
So all we're, what we're saying is that our goal is to review, we're setting a goal to review those items that have been implemented in the last three years.
And in part, if I can try to quote Dan again from a year ago, in part it was because some of those things had very specific funding mechanisms attached to them. And the intent was to make sure that if we are continuing to support those things, we're getting evaluated. Is that a fair restatement?
The money comes out of our pockets, it's more important.
Yeah.
Okay, let's move on to board operations. While you were looking the other way, nobody had anything to say about Common Core. However, all right, we got three things there.
Since you bring it up again, though, is it really a useful exercise for us to talk about Common Core like that?
During the year, meaning throughout the year. Yes, absolutely true. It's something that everybody's got, you know, on their mind. Most people have misconceptions and don't really know what it is. So the more we talk about it, the better. Go.
The only small suggestion I might make in wording is that there's a specific reference here to lesson plans. I might suggest that we report to you on how it's being integrated into instructional practice. So rather than what's written into plans, what's actually happening in classrooms.
Okay, I'm okay with that. Anybody else have any? Okay, board operations, these are all mine. I would like to see, and maybe this is just a procedure, but in my opinion, over the years, there's been too many changes at the last minute to board agendas and that we had a rule a long time ago that said that agenda didn't change after the Monday before a board meeting. And that was mostly because we had paper, paper board packets. However, it's still a good thing. I know there can be exceptions, but I think in most cases, I would like to see that as a goal for our meetings.
What if we commented, after we adopted the agenda, we commented on the success of this goal each board meeting? You know, we can say today, we started on time and we had no agenda updates. So we give ourselves a check mark for both of those today. But you go back and try and review it over, you know, six months later, review it over a span of six months, some of this gets lost in the.
Oh, I'm sure the district clerk will have a good record of when things got changed.
Yeah, I mean, you just have to be cognizant that sometimes the changes come because of board requests. And the other thing is, you know, the rain incident happened on Wednesday and the board meeting was on Thursday and, you know, to not report on what happened in North Park.
Oh, well, that's an exception.
Right.
Yeah, right, yeah.
But I just want to be clear that, to my knowledge, the board agenda has not changed unless it was an extraordinary circumstance or it was a request that we wanted to have this. I just want to say that from my perspective, between the Monday, all items in by the Monday before the board meeting.
Yes, like this past Monday.
Right.
Meaning Monday of this week, the one we just passed.
Right.
Yeah, that's reasonable.
And for instance, we did not get the technical, technology presentation until yesterday.
Right, and so then.
Presentation the day before the meeting.
Yeah, so then the question would be, if we set out, there's a good question, right, Forrest? So when we set the agenda, we, you know, weeks in advance, we put down the technology because it's subcommittee, the technology subcommittee, we were all ready to roll and have that on that date. So it was on the board agenda for that date. We have 3.5 employees, right, in the technology department. And it became very, very clear. that with the startup of school, that presentation was not going to be ready. So I have a choice to say, we'll provide the presentation later or we postpone the presentation.